We have Jim Halassee on, we have Alan Parkington, and I see that we also have Donna Phillips. Is that correct?
We're going to put Mindy, Mindy Goslin.
And Mindy, not to leave Mindy out.
Um, is it okay if I speak? This is Donna Phillips.
Uh, let me just, um, let's see, got the alternate. I just want to make sure I'm doing things in the right order here. So number three, the meeting's been called to order at 7:08. Uh, any additions or changes to the agenda? So, uh, go ahead, Donna.
Uh, I didn't, uh, my brother Bill Phillips is also, uh, sitting with Tom Fiorentino.
Okay, and I see he's on the, uh...
Yep, and as well as, as well as my niece, Megan Phillips, who's my brother's daughter, who's currently residing at 57 Hendy.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, there's this time for public participation. Uh, Jim, is this where you would just ask if there's any additional?
Well, this, this would be...
I'm sorry?
Hi, how are you? This is Walt. I just made it through on your phone.
Walter, how are you? Great. So we definitely have a full quorum now. Thank you for joining us, Walter.
Yeah, well, I don't know why, but it didn't go too smooth punching in the phone numbers.
I understand.
Well, that's okay. Okay, so, uh, for public participation, um...
You're doing the public hearing first, and the public participation would be in the regular meeting. Right? So, it's my understanding, I mean, you were gonna call, you called the public hearing to order.
Yep.
Okay, and, okay. Typically, we would have the applicant present the application, and then see comments.
Okay.
And, you know, I did have a conversation with, with Tom, the applicant's attorney, and I indicated that a sidewalk might be, um, requested.
Well, yes, as you and I talked about, uh, earlier this week, we, we thought that it may be in the best interest of this board. Again, um, obviously, I, I have questions, uh, about what it means to have, um, something built in a flood zone. I also have questions concerning, you know, what it means to have, uh, depositions of fill. So, um, hopefully, we can get some of those questions, um, answered tonight. But I think it might be in the board's, but, uh, reg-, uh, best interest, again, to your suggestion, Jim, that we have a sidewalk. So, I'll, I'll let you go ahead, and, um, I guess at this time, the Phillips can go ahead and, and present their case, or Alan Parkington?
You all set for us? You want us to get started there, Mr. Grausers? I'm Tom Fiorentino. I represent Bill Phillips, Donna Phillips, on their application.
Okay.
And presently, he is Andrew Bushnell, the engineer, who's drawn the plans. And what we were considering, especially after speaking to Mr. Halassee, was just presenting to you just a brief historical perspective, and then opening the opportunity for a sidewalk. Uh, and then we can keep the meeting open until next month, when we can get into the specifics, after you've had the opportunity to visually see the site and get an idea as to actually what they're going to do, where the fill would go, et cetera.
Great.
So if that seems okay with you, I can just give you the brief historical perspective, and then you can ask questions from there. We can schedule the sidewalk if you'd like.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so from a historical perspective, Bill Phillips and his sister Donna purchased the property. Uh, there was a house, there's, there is a residence on, on the lot. That residence was in a pretty state of decrepaness and dishevelness. They went in there with the intention of turning that into a single-family residence, primarily for use by the family. The intention is, if and when this variance is granted, they would be transferring the lot to Megan, who's also present today, currently living in the residence at 57 Hendy. Megan's intention is to build a single-family home there, where the Phillips family would essentially have a small little compound for themselves. Donna would probably be moving back to the, the stonehouse residence that's there now. With that intention, they started this process approximately a year ago, trying to get the necessary permits. Uh, they were able to, with, um, they were able to go to Wetlands, the Wetlands Commission, and grant, and they were granted an approval from the Wetlands Commission. And, and I do believe that the Wetlands Commission did walk the property and found that the walk was very helpful for them. Uh, so I think it will be just as helpful for this EBA. But from that perspective, that's the intention of the family, just to have two standalone, single-family residential homes, uh, for use by family members only. Andrew Bushnell has worked the property, walked the property, and he's got some engineering information with him now. We submitted a plan with our application. Uh, if you have specific questions now, we can try to answer some of those. But I would think that possibly your questions may arise after doing the walkthrough.
Uh, so, ju- just, I guess, I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment, when you say, um, that the property would only be used by family members, obviously, at any time the property could be sold.
It could be sold, but it's their intention. It's such a unique piece of property that they'd like to keep it in the family for as long as they can.
So, um, I guess my second question is, is, is this a division of the property to create two separate lots? Or is it two dwellings on one piece of property? I'm not su- I'm not sure I understand that.
There are two lots there already.
There are two lots already, okay.
We're using the 57 Hendy as the address, because the second lot hasn't had an address designation yet.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure if anybody else has questions, but I also was wondering, uh, where I talked about...
Excuse me, Bill, may I ask?
Sure.
What size the lot is?
Uh, the lot as it exists now? If you can hold one second, Andrew can get us that information.
Okay.
Eight point four acres. Now we're proposing the 1.388.
As a lot exists now, it's about eight point four. As proposed, it'll be about 1.4 acres. The remaining seven acres would be combined with 57 Hendy.
Um, Jim, is, does that, is that a conforming lot size for that area? What is the zoning? Is it one acre, two acre? What is?
Sixty thousand.
Jim Halassee?
It would be about sixty thousand square feet, sir.
Fifty thousand is required in that zone now.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm hearing a couple of voices. I'm just wanting to know, does that conform to the lot size requirements of that zoning? I don't know if Jim is still there. I see his picture, but it doesn't seem like he's responding.
Uh, I can say sixty thousand square foot required in that zone now, and we're at sixty thousand, two ninety-seven.
Okay, so it meets the requirements. Thank you. Um, can you also speak to, um, because I know very little about these type of, uh, things as far as, um, when you talk about deposition of fill? What, what exactly does that entail, and what does that mean?
So, basically, you know, so you were working on a floodplain area. So, floodplain is where the, the floodwaters are stored, so it doesn't cause more flooding downstream. So, you, you don't want to fill the flood area with any more fill and decrease its, its storage volume for the floodwaters. So, we need to, um, you know, we're adding fill to, for the house, to build the house up, to get it above the flood elevation, prevent damage to it in case of a hundred-year flood. So, we need to take fill from somewhere else on the property to make up for that fill we're putting in the house area. So, on the west side, we're proposing to take, I think it was about six hundred yards. Um, I don't have another right here in front of me. About six hundred yards from the west side, on the other side of the 57 Hendy Road House, and we'll be moving over to the, uh, east side, where we're proposing the house to be built. So, you know, we're taking six hundred yards, we're putting six hundred yards of fill in the floodplain, but we're taking six hundred yards out in another area to compensate for that, that filling. So, we have a net loss of zero, um, floodplain storage.
Gotcha. I appreciate, thank you. Are there, um, are there questions from board members or anybody else?
Uh, yeah, Walt, we're, um, approximately, how many feet up would that be, with that fill?
Um, looking at about, uh, three and a half feet of fill, you know, on, on average.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
Other comments?
Is that whole property, the, the entire piece of property, all on a floodplain? Or is it just that one area?
Um, not all of it, but I mean, there's floodplain all along that river there. You know, it's determined by the elevation of the land versus your location along the river.
Your driveway that you have, ba- based on what I'm reading here, I, I don't understand this picture very well, this graphic, because it's a lot of lines in tiny, tiny print. The driveway looks like it comes out right, oh, just before the, uh, town property begins. The town owns a piece of that land there, and that, like a triangle, from when Hendy...
Right. Go ahead.
Did we lose you?
No, I'm still here.
Okay.
So, that, that triangular piece of land there that the town, you know, town owned? So, if you see where it's shaded in, years ago, that was called, uh, Burbank or Old Powantree Road. Um, and the road, the shaded area, you can see there was a, a very sharp curve in the road there. And, you know, on the sidewalk, I can show you, you can still kind of see where it went. It's starting to get pretty grown in out there. But, uh, anyways, at some point, they straightened the road out, you know, and then the road became known as Hendy Road. They straightened that, that very sharp curve out, you know, straightened the road out, pushed it to the, to the south. So, that's how the town ended up with that piece. It's the old, it's the old road bed, basically. Um, so it's more of a, it, it might be, it's more of a right town right away. It's not really a parcel. It's a, you know, it's like they, how they own Hendy Road in front of all the other houses on the street, or any other roads in town, you know, the town maintained road. They own the road bed right away.
How big of a house is the length of the building?
New situation there.
How, how big of a, a building are you putting up? How big of a house?
Uh, it's about seventeen, maybe one square feet. Yeah, about seventeen, thirteen hundred square feet.
It's one, one floor?
Raise ranch.
Raise ranch, because of the, because of the, the flood there, you know, our basement level has to be above the flood elevation. So, um, it's gonna be a raised ranch, you know, flat and gray type of house.
Have you had any feedback from the neighboring properties?
Not that I'm aware of.
Hi, this is Jim Halassee, and, um, I apologize, I was kicked off the, the internet twice, so I haven't been participating in much of this meeting. So if I missed something, um, that is why. I, I did get one call from a neighbor, um, just with an inquiry, just asking about the impact of filling, filling floodplain. Um, and I explained to her that whatever, the volume of floodplain that is, is filled is, is made up elsewhere. Um, so to speak. Um, you know, I, I do want to point something out to the, to, to, really, both the, the applicant is, I mean, what, what the board has before them is, is this map, which, um, it's pretty, it's extremely busy. It's very hard to read. Um, just, so, you know, bear that in mind. There's a lot going on, and some people have the ability to, to, you know, increase the size of this more than others do. So, you know, some of us are looking at it eight by eleven.
Right.
It's, it's, it's a, it's pretty difficult to determine what's going on.
So, um, I guess the question, I, I want to go back for a minute to that piece of property that the town owns. Would your driveway be going through that piece of property that the town owns?
No, no, it will not.
It will not. Okay, thank you. Um, other questions, comments?
Kathleen?
Yes, Kathleen.
Is the town liable if, if it does flood? Are we liable? I know that's what we're trying to determine now, but...
Jim, do you, do you have, um...
Yeah, okay, I don't have an answer to that. Um, I can get one. I assume I can get one.
Okay.
That'd be, uh, definitely. No, that's, I, I had the same question for Jim. I talked to Jim on Monday. The same thing came up, and we were just, you know, if something, if it were to flood and there was damages to the house, is there any recourse against the town for, for, you know, especially if the house is sold and somebody else comes in and moves in the house? And they say, well, why did the town allow this to be built in a flood zone? You know, um, that's why I'm wondering where the town's liability comes in.
I can add that, from my perspective, as counsel for the Phillips family, I don't think the town has any liability, but I'm sure that's a question for your own town attorney.
Okay. Jim, we, are you gonna follow up with our attorney, attorney on that?
Yes, yes, I will.
Great, thank you. Additional comments, questions?
To just, maybe as a point of comfort, uh, if the variance is granted, the Phillips family has every intention of exceeding the, the current regulations. And from that perspective, yeah, the height would be in excess of what the town is currently requiring. There really shouldn't be any flood issues if this variance is granted.
Thank you.
I would also just add, from another piece of my perspective, the Phillips family has been trying, been working with Jim Halassee, and Mr. Halassee had made a recommendation, or had asked some questions of the town's land use attorney, Mark Brants. And Mark Brants did walk the site, or he didn't walk the site, but he was at the site and took a look at the maps. And so we did have the opportunity to go over this plan with him, and not to speak for him, but he's very familiar with it, and he's indicated that he thought that the plan would pass muster as far as the town regulations, as well as any type of state or theme regulations.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, uh, again, I'm not sure if there's other comments or questions, but the, uh, item of having a, a walkthrough, uh, has been proposed, and I, I know myself and a number of other people have indicated that they think that would be a good idea. Can we have some suggestions for a time, uh, a date and time to do the walk?
May I ask who will be in attendance at that walkthrough? Who would be necessary to be? Would, um, any officials, either from the state and/or from the town, be there?
Okay, I'm the zoning agent, and I'll be there.
And I'm the zoning board of appeals. I'm the board, zoning board of appeals chairman, so myself, and obviously Jim would be there. Uh, I'm not sure if there's other members of the zoning board of appeals that would, uh, care to walk as well, Gerard or Kathleen or...
I would be happy to join your, your onsite walk, if it's at a day and time that I'm able to be there.
Okay, uh, this is Halassee. Um, I mean, it is, it is part of the public hearing, and I'd like to address that, the procedural, a procedural issue with that in a minute. Um, so it, it's open to the public. So the applicant, I mean, the applicant will have whoever the applicant chooses to have. They can have, you know, their engineer or not. They have whoever, they ask whoever they think is appropriate, their attorney desired. Any members of the public are welcome. It's, it's posted just like a, a public meeting.
So we would have to post that in the paper?
Yeah. No, nope, just posted in the, in the town, town clerk's office, twenty-four hours in advance. Um, I mean, it's throughout a time, a day and time, and it's, um, I'm gonna say Saturday morning at, at nine o'clock, just because that's a very typical time that, um, works for a lot of people. Happens to be what planning and zoning uses. By no means, um, is it any better than another time, other than, uh, it's, you know, people are generally up, et cetera.
Sure. Are you proposing, uh, this Saturday, Jim, or any Saturday?
I think it would, I think it would be best, if possible, to do it this Saturday. Only because, it sounds like, I don't know, I think it would be better to take it, to get, to get it done, to do it.
Yep.
Right up front. If there's any issues that arise, you know, there'll be more time to, to address.
More time not to hold them up.
Perfect, okay. Um, do we have to, do we have to, uh, take a vote in that or anything, Jim? Or is that just set, or do we have to have a, a motion to, to do that?
Why don't you do that? Why don't you, yes, why don't you make?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, do our walkthrough this coming Saturday. The date would be, I believe, the twenty-second?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty-third, I'm sorry. Today's Wednesday, you're right. Twenty-third at nine AM, so January twenty-third, at the property, nine AM. Uh, do we have?
Okay.
Uh, so that's, so I made the motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
I second it, Walt, we're...
Well, thank you, Walter. Uh, any, any comments, uh, concerning that?
Do you need?
Discussion?
Do you need, do you need any amount to go to the walkthrough? Or just whoever can go?
I, I don't believe there's any particular amount, Jim. Um, can you, can you answer that? I don't believe there's any set amount. It's just anybody that's interested in, in making a walkthrough.
I believe, I believe you're right, um, yes.
Yeah. So, um, does that answer your question, Kathleen?
Yes, it did.
Yeah. Commissioner DeRosa, can we just make sure that the, the owner is, uh, the applicant is available at that time?
That'd be good.
We are, everyone's available.
Okay.
Great. Okay, the, so all those in favor of having a walkthrough at, um, nine o'clock, Saturday the twenty-third, uh, please say aye. And I guess we'll have to actually have a, a roll call, right? Uh, so, uh, Gerard?
Aye.
Uh, Walter?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, um, the ayes have it. And, uh, we will have that walkthrough this Saturday at nine o'clock.
Okay, Commissioner DeRosa, um, it's Halassee. Can I just touch upon the procedural issue here is? I just wanted to note that, um, the, the walk, the sidewalk is effectively a public, part of the public hearing, uh, which is recorded as such. So, when people are onsite, should be very limited discussion. It should be, because everything has to be recorded. So what, what we have, and what other commissions do is, is they limit discussion to orientation of the site. Questions can be brought back to the, to the meeting, when it, when the, to the public hearing at the, at the next meeting. That's how, process how it works. That's, um, kind of important.
Uh, thank you, Jim. And, and who records those, those discussions?
There is no, there is no, um, audio recording of it. And that's, that's why the discussions are, are kept to orientation.
Okay, because I thought you said it had to be, I thought you said a minute ago that it needed to be recorded. Okay.
Yeah, and sidewalks are not typically recorded, but, um, discussion is. So, I guess that's how it's gotten around. It's the best I have, if I got.
Okay. When I say recorded, I don't mean an actual recording. I meant comments, questions, and answers will be recorded by someone. Is that?
I will do minutes, and they will say something like, it was called to order. The engineer pointed out where the house is gonna go. You know, a couple of things like that. Um, you know, whatever transpires onsite. And that's it.
Okay, great.
So I, I will handle that. But again, you know, it's, they're very simple, because, because discussion is so limited.
Um, I would like to add, Mr. Monroe did not vote on the sidewalk scheduling.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Monroe. Is he still with us?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Bill. I didn't mean to dislude you.
I'll, I'll go.
Yeah, all right. So you vote, you vote yay for the sidewalk. Thank you, Mindy. Don't know what we would do without you. And Jim? Okay, is there any, um, further discussion at this point?
Yeah, I do have one, back to the, to the map. Andrew, I'm hoping that if you're gonna be onsite, or if not, um, provide your, your, um, client with a, a copy of a full-size map for the sidewalk.
Yeah, color, color up the map and, and take the, the, the lot that we're talking about and make that at a bigger scale. So...
Okay.
A little easy for you guys to read.
That'd be great.
I think, telling my mom is a house staked out in the Suffolk area, and I'll stick. So, yes, we have the house area already, we've got the Suffolk area already staked out up there, so. Yeah.
Super. Um, any, any other discussion, uh, Jim?
No.
Okay, uh, can we move on to number eight, our administrative report from the zoning agent?
Yeah, I have nothing to report at this time. Um, no, no, I don't. I do have nothing to report.
Thank you. Uh, we have two number eights. Little typo, I guess, there. Uh, approval of the min, the minutes from October twenty-first. I'm not sure if everybody got to, uh, read those minutes. Um... I did, and they looked, uh, perfect. I'm not sure about everybody else, uh, Gerald and Bill.
I read, I read the minutes, and they look good.
Uh, Kathleen?
Yep.
Bill?
I haven't read them.
Bill, you have not? And, and Walter?
Yep, fine.
Okay, um... Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as, as reported?
I'll move that we approve the meet, uh, meeting minutes of October twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Walter. Do we have a second on that?
Yes, I'll second it.
I'm sorry, was that Gerald or?
Gerard.
That was Gerald that talked.
Gerard, thank you, Gerard. Okay, uh, by roll call, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, uh, Kathleen?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Bill, you didn't read them. Um, so, I'm not sure if you can vote. And, uh, and I accept them as well. Uh, so the minutes are accepted as reported. Um... I don't think there's any other business to come before this meeting, uh, so it is continued until our February meeting. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Uh, make a motion, we adjourn.
Thank you, Walter. I'm sorry, who was that?
I'll second it, Gerard.
Thank you, Gerard. Uh, any discussion? Okay, uh, all those in favor of adjournment?
I do have one, I do.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
No, you can vote. I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, have an item, a miscellaneous item, but I'll have to bring it up after adjournment.
Okay, thank you.
Just a comment.
Uh, Kathleen?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Gerard?
Yes.
And I do too, so the ayes have it. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we look forward to seeing you on Saturday at nine o'clock for the walkthrough, and, uh, obviously, meeting again at the, uh, continued meeting in February. Um, so, Jim, you had another comment?
Just, my comment is that, um, there's still, your commission is still looking for members. Um, it's always, uh, if anybody knows of anybody that might be interested, just send them to either their, um, party chair, or the town clerk, or me, I'll get them in the right direction. Um, it's... It's, I I think we're at we're at five now, right?
Like, um, we we are.
It's, I mean, it's with particularly with the variance, I mean, you not only need, you not only need a a quorum, but somebody, an applicant needs four votes, four affirmative votes. So it's very important um that you not you not only have a quorum, but you have you have the four.
Right.
And with with five members, I think if you're at um wherever you're at, it would be it would be great if you could fill up some slots. That's all.
Yeah, yeah, I was at Republican. Thank you for that, Jim. I was at Republican uh meeting. We were trying to fill other uh boards and commissions and uh unfortunately, nobody stepped up on the ZBA, but hopefully we will find somebody. And again, to Jim's point, if you know anybody that's willing to step in and and help out the town, that'd be great. Thank you for that, Jim. Okay, well, thank you, everybody. And again, we will look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Yep.
This job.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night.